Up next, we have a roll call. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present with Councilor Grego previously requesting to be excused.
Okay. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Grego from the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda is the citizen comment. This is the part of the agenda to where we have citizens complete a comment card. And you turn those comment cards in to our city clerk right here, Holly. And then you're able to come up to the podium and speak for up to three minutes. The clock will keep track of time. If you are still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end the conversation and have a seat. Do we have any comment cards today? Just one? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Ruthie Brown.
I thought Holly left my card out on purpose, but I know she wouldn't do that. So, anyway, I would like City Council to reconsider something. And I don't, I don't know when this, well, I don't, I do know when it changed. It changed when Nathan Chirpeski took over the Christmas lighting ceremony. Took it away from the Alamosa Downtown Merchants. We were a pretty active, vibrant group, and then the city took it over. And, you know, half the businesses now are out of business and all that type of stuff. But for Alamosa not to have their Christmas lights lit the Friday after Thanksgiving, to me is really, really sad. The reasons I've been given is primarily overtime. And I, I don't, I don't know what that means. Why? We, we missed Black Friday. We missed Shop Local Saturday. We missed Cyber Monday. We missed Gray Tuesday, Travel Tuesday, whatever. But drive downtown right now, and I just did, and, and all your retail businesses are lit up, but the city is dark. And I'd, I'd like to see, I guess, what exactly the costs are in, in getting city crews to set the timers on, on that Friday and have it Friday. We used to always do it then. And we'd have a John Deere tractor, and we'd start up here, and we'd go to the city and the county building, and it was no big deal. And, and so I think, I think you owe it to not only retail people, but all the people traveling through town on Thanksgiving, you know, and the day after. So, to me, it's very important. And you see the lights at, at Greenspot, they're staying up year round, so be ready for that. But my other comment, I had a few, but things change here. So, I see this creating a Main Street Advisory Committee. And, and I guess we gotta have another committee and another committee. And I would, I would just ask that you also create a lower downtown Alamosa committee so that we can get the crumbs from whatever you decide to do downtown and create so that, so that we could, maybe we'll feel important, I don't know. We work hard, but maybe if we had a committee, we could have free coffee and pizza or something, I don't know. But just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more comment cards. So we'll move on down the agenda to ceremonial items. The oath of office for Elizabeth Liz Hensley in Ward 1. Okay, congratulations, Councilor Hensley. Last meeting, I failed to allow council members to say a few words or comments after the event. So, I just don't want to make that same mistake. So if you would like to say a few words to someone in the audience, feel free to do so.
Well, I was gonna say, I didn't want to be necessarily something that not everybody else did, so if you didn't want me to. No, so I just want to thank everybody. I've enjoyed my last four years as City Councilor, and I really look forward to the next four years. It's something that I continue to learn, but I also have a real passion for, and I truly enjoy. And I appreciate everybody's confidence in allowing me to have another four years to be City Council again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Colorado Gives Day. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, Erin, okay, please, you can come up. If you want to say a few words, and then what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation, and then Councilor and I will come down and present you with the proclamation, okay?
Sounds great. First, I want to say that I'm here on behalf of Mike Roque, who runs the, hold on, I'm gonna get it right. The Community Foundation of the San Luis Valley. He's unable to be here today because of a death in his family. So he sends his regrets. He says, hello, Mayor, and Council, and community members. Tuesday, December 10th, is Colorado Gives Day. The Community Foundation of the San Luis Valley is working to promote giving in the San Luis Valley to the 26 San Luis Valley organizations participating in Colorado Gives Day. They're hoping to exceed the $300,000 that was generated in giving last year, in 2018, on that single day. In addition, they'd like to invite you all to join the Community Foundation and Alamosa Mayor Ty Coleman for a honkin' wave on Tuesday, December 10th, at 12 o'clock noon at 639 Main Street in front of the San Luis Valley Brewing Company. Permit me, as I read, some of the organizations that are participating in Colorado Gives Day this day, or this year. They include Adam State University Foundation, Alpine Achievers Initiative, Blue Peaks Developmental Services, Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley, the Center for Astorative Programs, Colorado Rio Grande Restoration Foundation, Conejos Clean Water, Creed Arts Council, Creed Early Learning Center, Creed Rep Theater, Del Norte Public Library, Energy Resource Center, Headwaters Alliance, Hospice del Valle, La Puente Home, Orient Land Trust, Rio Grande Headwaters Land Trust, Rio Grande Water Shed Conservation and Education Initiative, Rigwiki, for those of you who like those sort of things. San Luis Valley Animal Welfare Society, San Luis Valley Great Outdoors, San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity, San Luis Valley Immigrant Resource Center, San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition, Tucasa, Valley Wide or Valley Humane League, and Valley Wide Health Systems. Those are the 26 participating organizations. Colorado Gives Day is particularly important because there is a large chunk of money that is proportionally given to whoever has the most contributions on that single day from Colorado Gives. So, thank you very much for the proclamation.
You're welcome. I'll go ahead and read it, and then Council will come down and present it to you, okay? All right, Colorado Gives Day. Whereas 2019 is the 10th anniversary of Colorado Gives Day, and whereas Colorado Gives Day is a statewide movement to increase online giving, and whereas Colorado Gives Day is the ultimate feel-good giving experience, connecting donors with many kinds of nonprofits while connecting nonprofits with an expanded base of supporters in a 24-hour event. Whereas Colorado Gives Day unites all Coloradians in a common goal to strengthening the state nonprofits by giving their favorite charities, giving to their favorite charities online. And whereas Colorado Gives Day is a movement that inspires and unites thousands of donors to give where they live and support Colorado nonprofits. And whereas Colorado Gives Day is one of the most successful Give Days in the nation with 35.3 million raised last year. Whereas over 300,000 was raised for 28 San Luis Valley nonprofits. And whereas San Luis Valley Gives is an effort by the Community Foundation of the San Luis Valley to inspire, inspire people to give in our six-county community and increase online giving for local participating nonprofits. And whereas over 32 nonprofits will participate in 2019. Now therefore, I, Ty Coleman, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, and on behalf of the Alamosa City Council, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December the 10th as Colorado Gives Day in the city of Alamosa, Colorado. Furthermore, I encourage all citizens of the city of Alamosa to join the statewide Colorado Gives Day movement by supporting the nonprofit organizations in the valley and to give where you live. Thank you. So, I'll come down and we'll present it to you. Up next on the agenda is Consent Calendar A. Councilor Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have a presentation from outside agency, a lead update. I saw my lead group out there in the audience, and I'm quite sure you all know the protocol by now because you've been here for a few times, and we really appreciate you all coming out and giving us these updates.
We appreciate you having us.
Okay, thank you.
Wait for the chief. I'm gonna go?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll start. So it's good to see everyone again. I've invited Scott Dillon. He is our new DA liaison in the DA's office. He's a native of the San Luis Valley, so it's exciting having somebody who's from the valley and knows our culture and dynamics. And he's currently going to school right now over at Adam State, so he's working part-time. But it's been a added benefit to have that position filled again for, for our program. He brings a lot to, I think, our program in helping us keep track of all of our participants and court dates and helping us collect data. He really likes numbers, which is exciting, so he's gonna be great. And it's been awesome having him part of our team now. He started on November 4th. So just some updates. We are currently up to 77 referrals for the, since we've been going. Since September, when I last saw the Council, we have had 16 new referrals, and we currently have three pending from APD and two pending from Motavista PD. So they've been moving. This week alone, we've had five. So, we've definitely broken him in as far as how we work and our processes. And we've got our Conejos training coming up next week, so we'll be training the officers down in Conejos County and get them onboard, hopefully by the beginning of the year, to start making referrals in Conejos County. We, I don't remember if we had reported our continued funding. We did get rewarded our continuation funding through 2022, so super excited about that. Excuse me. We had the opportunity, our team was able to attend a PTAP conference, and that's a Police Treatment and Community Collaborative. And I applied for a scholarship for us to be able to go to take a team with us down there. It was in Florida, so we got to go to Florida in November. It was a great conference. We were able to take Captain Spangler from Alamosa PD. Megan actually went and placed for the DA's office. We took Officer Sisneros from Motavista PD, case manager, and myself. And so we had a nice big team that was able to go down there with us. Great opportunities for networking sessions, to hear what other police departments in the nation are doing. So it was great for our other officers to hear some of the other movements and other communities. Great networking opportunities and connections. Our, our staff, my case managers and myself, we were recently trained in CRAFT, which is a community reinforcement and family training. And so at the beginning of the year, really, our goal is to start providing some groups and supports for the participants and families that we work with. And so the craft is geared more towards helping family members and people who are, have friends or close people who are related to them going through substance abuse issues. So it's more of a support for family and friends of those who are going through those struggles. We're hoping to get the parallel training for that to provide for our participants so it'd be kind of a co-occurring thing where the family member goes to one, and the participants go to another, so then they can start working together. So something that's in the works and we're working towards doing. And with those groups, another resource that we're able to provide with that group is, so as, as we do the groups, we're able to provide Narcan to everybody who participates in those. So once they complete our groups, we're able to send them home with some Narcan. Our group also participated in a legislative tour that was here in September. And out of that, we've had some connections, just interest in our program, how we've been going here in the valley, how, you know, our collaboration works, how our partnerships work, how our program works with our participants. We did, our OBH, we had a site visit not too long ago, and so they were down here for a few days to visit our program and attended one of our operational work group meetings. So it was really nice for her to be able to attend that. I've been to Washington DC, I think, four times this year. And with that, though, I think the nice thing is they're wanting to hear about our program in smaller communities. As they roll out diversion and deflection programs, they're really trying to figure out what's working for communities. And for us to have the opportunity to have a voice at the table is a great honor for me. And so I've had a lot of opportunities to be able to bring the work that, and highlight what we do here in the valley, and really talk about, you know, how we've been able to overcome barriers, what are the challenges that we face in small communities. And I feel like I'm always bragging about the opportunities of collaboration that we have. I think we have great partnerships. I know every time we have policy meetings and we talk about challenges and barriers, our partners are willing to work together to figure out how do we work these, work through these and develop additional resources. Because I think the other thing we're noticing is this tilt in culture and shift in way of doing things. So we're trying to divert from the criminal to more of the health systems. And so now how do we help or support our health systems as we make that shift through this, through this work? So, a lot of stuff going on, but it's all good stuff. And I, I think Scott wanted to go ahead and share some perspectives from the DA's office.
Yes, so while I was reading through Santa Fe, New Mexico's lead evaluation, I noticed that they had a very interesting stat. Participants that were active with their case managers had an 18% decrease in new arrests, while as participants that were considered low engagement with their case managers had a 200% increase. And so that was quite a difference, and it kind of took me by surprise by just the simple fact of meeting with the case manager led to such a dramatic decrease in arrests. So I went ahead and kind of tried to do a little bit of the numbers for here in Alamosa and what we're seeing. And we actually do have quite a bit of difference. Our, our pool is a little bit smaller, so there's some outliers that kind of affect this. But regardless, the participants that are considered inactive with our case managers have actually a 25% increase in new arrests than the participants that are considered active. And so the program's definitely having an effect. I think it's really important that we all, I mean, we all know that recovery from these type of things is a long, hard road. And that simple act of going and talking to case managers is a huge act of self-care, and it's a step in the right direction. So I think the program's working quite well, and we'll see how it goes continuing.
And from law enforcement, just a quick update from us. So I didn't get to go to Florida. But I did talk to Captain Spangler, he did go. He, he had a few things that he pointed out. From what I understand, CRP could possibly be exploring four additional pathways to intervention. Just so you know, lead is only one of those pathways. Carrie already gave you the numbers that we've got. I continue to educate, and lead also educates our, our younger additions to our department since we do have a pretty new department right now. But we continue to work with them, and everything seems to be moving in a positive direction, so.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
So if Chief has done, I want to add a little bit. The pathways that he's referencing, one of them is potentially grant-funded through the state, which is the co-responder. And the state is, has been encouraging us to look seriously at that. I think after the chief has met with Captain Spangler and, and learned some more on that, that we are definitely interested in taking a look at that, especially if the grant program through the state is as all-encompassing as what the lead has been. It, it really does allow us to try something like that. I know with discussions of Carrie and Clarissa, we might be looking at taking a trip to Longmont, which has paired both the co-responder and lead together, and then maybe another rural community that's doing only the co-responder. So, nothing definitive. We can explain more later what co-responder is and why we might be looking at that. But lead is kind of opening other doors in regards to are there other one resources we can bring to this community? But also, is there more effective ways to, to try to help people who are encountering our officers? And so, the other piece of information I wanted to share is I received an email just today from the Colorado Municipal League. We had submitted as a potential session for the state conference, this lead. We presented it as something where it would be all four communities, so it's not just Alamosa. But we don't, we were selected to be one of those sessions. So, I don't know when, I don't know how long, and all of that, but we did get an email giving us a heads up that we were selected. So our team will be traveling to Westminster to, to do that.
All right, Council. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I am just always so proud of you guys and the things that you're doing. I think it's wonderful. And with the other things that are happening in our community, with the MAT expansion, the Medication-Assisted Treatment, having access to that. And lead comes up actually in the Behavioral Health Task Force as well, as one of those options. And then I heard, I'm excited about the co-responder because I heard some presentations two weeks ago in a larger community that has co-responders where the types of arrests, people are getting arrested at a very high rate. And now that they've had co-responders for the last two years, people with the same symptoms. So, people with active mental health concerns or active substance use issues, there have been no arrests for the crime, like for crimes. They've been like being able to talk people down, not arresting them for the disturbing the peace, the things that they were getting arrested for and going to jail with this co-responder model. So, I know we'll learn more about that, and I just happen to have extra knowledge about that. But it, it's something that is really exciting to me, and I think that could make a huge impact with everything else we have going on in our community. I feel like we're really braiding resources. And CRP and the team at the DA's office and our police officers are at, at the helm of that, and that's not usual. And so I just want to say, I think we're doing some really great things, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Hensley?
Well, I also, it's just awesome what is happening, and the collaboration, like you say, is fantastic. I was at the League of Cities Conference in San Antonio two weeks ago. And so it's, I was partaking in quite a few of the group's open sessions with small cities, and I spoke quite a bit about this. And everybody, I can't tell you how many people came up to me asking more information, and that idea of, wow, we didn't even know something like this is around. And so sharing a lot of what you've been doing. And I think one of the things they were most impressed about, besides everything else, was that idea of that people can come, the different groups can come together and collaborate. And so it was great to be able to share that in that environment as well and be able to open the doors potentially for other small cities that also could potentially do something like this. Because sometimes they feel like they're not quite big enough that can do these things, and that there is that option. So, thank you.
Council Brawls?
Councilor, I want to say, the more I learn about lead, the better I like it, so. It's a new concept to me, but I appreciate what you do, and it looks like we're succeeding. And, you know, particularly for our community. And I applaud and congratulate you, and thank you at the same time.
And I too would like to thank you for everything that you're doing. The good thing that I like to hear when I'm out in the community from the people who are participating in the program, the positive feedback I get from the entire team is that you all meet them where they are. And there's no judgment when people relapse. So, whatever you're doing to keep that chemistry working, keep doing it. Okay? Thank you.
I really, I want to thank you guys too. The program's awesome, I know, you know, the more I learn about it as well. And not to be a killjoy, but I just have one question. Have you guys seen a reduction in that stigma we had talked about before? Where people were kind of catching stuff? Have you seen it, has that come down a little bit, or?
A, referring to like the snitch issue? You know, it's funny, so it comes in waves. And people get really creative with their stories around that. The one thing I will say, though, is when we have people who are coming to us and they say, you know, I've heard this on the street, people are telling me this all the time, but I don't care. I want help. That says a lot. And so for us, it just is, it doesn't matter if it's out there or not. People, when they're ready, they, nothing's gonna stop them. And they are willing to find out themselves that it's not. I've had a couple of the officers also come to me and say, you know, I've tried telling them about this program. I think they need to hear it from someone besides me. And, but they're willing to go with the officers, which is a huge, huge thing, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All righty. Okay. Up next, we have TSJC, an update by Dr. Epper. And she's going to introduce Jim to us.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and Council members. What a pleasure it is to be with you this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity to present to you. It occurred to me that on the agenda, it said that I'm here to introduce our new Vice President, Jim Kiner, which I'll do shortly. But I also realized I hadn't formally and properly introduced myself to you. So I'm Rhonda Epper, President at Trinidad State Junior College. And I've been in this role since June of this year, so about six months now, and have really just enjoyed the opportunity to be here in the valley and in Trinidad, getting to know the communities. I've had the chance to meet with a number of business leaders, community organizations, and people here in this area, and started to realize that in order for this campus to really flourish and meet our mission, we really needed to have a dedicated leader who could be on this campus full-time, every day, and live in this community, and really integrate and better understand what the needs are for economic development and meeting the workforce needs. So, we have hired a Vice President, Jim Kiner, who's here with me this evening. So we have hired a Vice President, Jim Kiner, who's here with me this evening. He's been here exactly a month now. And Jim and I worked together at Community College of Denver for several years. And Jim was our lead Dean of Career and Technical Education. A really just innovative thinker and entrepreneur and started some great programs at CCD. Helped to grow our manufacturing programs, machining, welding, our computer information technology programs, entrepreneurship, business, early childhood. I'll let him tell you more about it. I don't want to steal too much of his thunder, but we're just really glad to have him on board and I'd like for him to introduce himself.
Well, thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor. It's been 30 days. And I see a lot of very familiar faces. I think most of the time that I've, in this past 30 days, I've been out in the community. I've had the opportunity to meet with business leaders, community leaders, just normal, everyday citizens. And I can't tell you, even the three weeks prior to me starting here, how welcoming Alamosa has been to my family and to me and making us part of this community. As my wife and I came down to start looking at homes, we were greeted by business and community leaders, given tours, given insight, to daycare opportunities for our five-year-olds and so forth. So I can't underscore enough or overemphasize enough how grateful we are as a family to be so welcome to this community and we're really looking forward to it. Just to speak a little bit about myself, I'm a veteran. So I have a strong interest in the veterans' issues here. And having learned that there are 4,000 veterans in the San Luis Valley, I hope I can contribute to that, that demographic. I have a strong manufacturing and international business background, having worked in Pricewaterhouse and also international construction across Central and Eastern Europe. So I also bring that international perspective. I was a Vice President of Workforce Development and Economic Development. And then for the past eight years have served in higher education. So I think the, when we begin to talk about the challenges that higher education faces here in Alamosa, I think what I can bring to Alamosa is the ability to speak the language and translate the language differences between business, between higher education, between workforce development. Because we're all saying the same thing. We all have the same vision, that is, to increase the economic prosperity of this region through growing tax base, through retaining the youth, through bringing in new manufacturing and other employers. But we don't necessarily speak the same language. So I think of all the skill sets that I can bring to, to the college and to this community is that ability to translate across these functionalities of business, economic development, and higher education, so we can achieve that, that goal. As I read through the opportunities and challenges that community faces, I believe, aside from our core focus of working with Adam State and providing that pipeline into four-year programs, that this campus will play a key role in workforce development and economic development. It's those short-term certificates and those in-demand two-year programs that will allow for our, our adult learners, our non-traditional learners, and our youth to gain the education they need to be employable immediately. And we hope as a community to stay in the region, but also to have those transferable skills out into the communities beyond the San Luis Valley, knowing that someday, like I did, we all come back to Colorado. So I appreciate the kindness, I appreciate the welcome, and I look forward to working with you over the next many, many years. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I have shared with you a slide presentation as a handout. And I'm not going to go through all of these slides, but I did want to point out just a few highlights for you. If you turn to the first slide, just to point out that our college is 95 years old. We started in 1925, we're the oldest community college in Colorado. We also have the largest geographic span in our service area, serving about 80,000 people in Southern Colorado and Northern New Mexico. A significant economic impact, 62.1 million, according to the last economic impact study that was done. And that's based on the roughly 250 employees on our payroll in addition to the goods and services that we purchase as a college and the impact of our alumni in the region. We have small classes and affordable tuition. We sort of, I'm moving to the next slide now. We sort of pride ourselves on being an engine for economic development, talent development, and social mobility. That's kind of what community colleges are known for. We are an on-ramp to the middle class. We strengthen communities through our talent and our workforce development. And we strengthen families by giving our students a chance to be self-sufficient. And we're increasing their earning potential over a lifetime and really changing the trajectory of their lives. Just really quickly, looking at one of our statistics that we're proud of, our completion rate is one of the highest in the state system of community colleges at 45%. When you compare that to the state average of about 25%. We were recently named as an Aspen Prize Top 150 Institutions in the Nation. That's out of about 1,100 community colleges. And that is based on our high completion rate. So we're really proud of that recognition. You'll see our service area on the next slide. And that's where we came up with the service area population of about 80,000. It includes the eight counties in Colorado that are in our defined service area. And New Mexico is not in our official service area, but we consider Northern New Mexico part of our service area as well because we draw a lot of students from Northern New Mexico. The next slide shows the educational attainment in our region. And if you look at the brown bar compared to the kind of bluish reddish bar, the brown bar is our service area population and the educational attainment of our population. And you can see that we're ahead of the state in terms of the number of adults who have completed some college, but no degree. That includes certificates. But we lag the state when it comes to associate degree attainment. And we really lag far behind the state when it comes to baccalaureate degree attainment. We also lag the state in terms of master's degrees and professional degrees. When you add all of those together, on slide number six, you'll see that our total percent of our population holding a college credential, either a certificate or a degree, is about 30% in our service area. And that's compared to the overall state attainment rate of 58%. And then looking at the Colorado Commission on Higher Education's goal of 66%, you can see that we have a long way to go in terms of the educational attainment of post-secondary education in our region. What this tells me, when I look at our population, our 80,000 people in our service area and our low attainment rate, is that there are a lot of people that we're not reaching in our communities. And that we may not even be trying to reach right now. That's part of what we're going to be looking at, is how do we reach out to adults in our population to re-engage them? And we need to raise the aspirations of our community. Because we know that if there is a way out of poverty, it's through education and through post-secondary education in particular. This next chart just kind of highlights that. This is coming from a CDHE, Department of Higher Education, report that shows the median wage outcomes for graduates after one year, after five years, and after 10 years, and the value of that post-secondary credential. In terms of the economic prospects for our graduates, we like to look at what's happening with economic growth in our communities. And so we've just been thinking about the economic landscape, both in Trinidad and some of the activities, the economic development activities that are happening there and in the Valley. And just knowing that our primary purpose is really to connect to the economic development needs of this community. We want to focus our programming on what the needs are. And the next slide shows some of the programs that we have been working on recently in response to the economic development needs in our communities. We've expanded nursing significantly by about 36 students just this year. We'll be launching a Bachelor of Science in Nursing next year. That'll be our first bachelor's degree. We've just started paramedic training this year. We're doing a teacher education program in partnership with University of Colorado Denver, where students in Trinidad can complete the first two years of a teacher education degree on the Trinidad campus. And then professors from CU Denver come to our campus and students can complete that degree on the campus in Trinidad. And that's in response to a teacher shortage in the Trinidad area. We're starting an unmanned aviation program, technical theater degree. That is an applied associate's degree. And a trail building certificate, and that's in cooperation with the partners that are working on the acquisition of the public land of Fisher's Peak to become the next state park. We're also reviving our building trades and construction program. We're starting out in Trinidad. We're also working in Werfinow County with that program. If there is a need here, we'd also like to explore that as well. Then just very quickly going through some of our challenges. We, like many institutions of higher education in the state, have had a drop in enrollment over the last six years. You can see what those numbers look like. I'm hoping that we have leveled off this fall. We're up by about 3% in enrollment. And hoping that that continues to hold for spring. We've budgeted flat for this year. And just looking at the next slide, that is one of our major challenges. We've been through a really challenging budget period of time over the last few years. But as our enrollment has begun to stabilize, we're looking at slowly and conservatively investing in some strategic areas. One of those strategic investments was in our new Vice President position for this campus. Another one of our challenges is we have an equity gap. If you look, this is on slide number 12. While we're really proud of our high completion rate at 45%, that completion rate for students of color is much lower at 32.5%. So we have about a 12.6 percentage gap. And that's one of the higher equity gaps in our state system of community colleges. When I shared this with our college community, I wanted to show them one of our peer institutions, Morgan Community College, which actually has the highest graduation rate in the state. And is also a Hispanic-serving institution, has a much smaller equity gap. So we know it's attainable and that's one of my priorities, is to try and close that equity gap. We also have some work to do on our transfer rate. We're behind the state average in terms of the number of students who were successfully transferring to a four-year institution. With being so close to Adam State University, I think that there's, there's no reason why we can't be transferring more students successfully and getting them to a four-year degree. Last slide, just some of the goals that I've set aside for reaching by the year 2025, which will be our 100-year anniversary, is to increase our graduation rate further to 50%, increase our enrollment, close the completion equity gap, double the number of transfers. I'd like to begin rebuilding our reserves with a goal of putting a million dollars per year in reserves and launch a capital campaign to support our facilities master plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both, Councilor Daniel. And then Councilor Vehill.
I just wanted to say thank you for being here and doing the work that you're doing. And welcome to you and your family to Alamosa. I can absolutely appreciate the need for a translator in some of our conversations. So I'm really excited that you see that need. And I really appreciate these statistics. That is really, I think it's going to be helpful as we continue to have conversations about higher education and the needs that we have. It's something that comes up relatively often for me and some of the conversations I have in our community. So it's nice to have a dedicated leadership team here and I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate sharing this information with us, so then we can also spread the really good news about all of the awesome things you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to kind of work off what Ms. Daniels said. Being a high school teacher, a lot of our students are going to Trinidad State. And because not everybody wants to go to a four-year and the affordability of Trinidad is phenomenal. And a lot of the kids that we deal with want to get to work. They want to get in the workforce right away. So a lot of our students are starting to go to TSJC and we're seeing the value of that. And it's good to have this information, as Ms. Daniels said, so we can be more informed of conversations that I might have with seniors looking to go to college next year. Welcome to Alamosa and the Valley. Glad you're here, it is a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vehill. Councilor Hensley?
So I also would like to welcome you. It's great to have you in our community. I'm from Adam State. And so what I think is great about this is that idea of this partnership of working together. And as Councilor Vehill said, is some people, four-years is a great program for them, others it's not. Some people do want to go right into the trades. There's a shortage in those areas as well. And so I think it's a great goal and that it should be met in the sense that we have two great universities, or great colleges here. And that idea that why aren't we, I think can, and I think you both are bringing a great energy, to that idea of how can we raise that level of, of how much people are making and they're being able to sustain themselves in our community. So welcome and I'm really excited.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Carson?
I just wanted to welcome you both as well. I wanted to thank you for hiring a Vice President for here for the Valley, as they've said, that's huge for us. I do, I do love the stats. There's some one thing that I'm a little disappointed that isn't here, but I understand the reason why. And I would love to get together with you and meet about that. I'm an IT manager and as an IT person, you can probably ask any, any person in the room, there's a huge gap there in the Valley. And I understand the need for the understand, you know, the need to fill the, the needs that the Valley has currently, you know, as a priority. But it's always been a little disappointing to me. So I'd love to get together with you and chat about that. I'm an alumni of Trinidad and I did get my networking degree there a lot, 20 centuries ago. I would love to visit with you guys and again, thank you and welcome.
We recognize that's a gap and we're hoping to do something about that.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. And Councilor Brawls?
I just want to echo again, thank you for what you do and we appreciate Trinidad Junior College. It plays an integral part of our community. And so thank you and thanks for your diligence and I appreciate your goals. If you can achieve those goals, that'd be great. So thank you.
And I would like to wrap it up. And I too would like to thank you all for your presentation. It's been said that knowledge is power, but I like to take it a step further and say applied knowledge is power. And my question to you is what are you all doing in your plans to make sure that the students, once they get that knowledge, they're able to work with maybe community businesses or organizations to help apply the knowledge that they gain from the institution?
So most of our programs, in particular our career and technical programs, have some kind of applied learning component. And we work closely, every single one of our programs has an advisory board made up of industry partners and employers to make sure that we're teaching the skills that are really needed by the local employers. We often arrange internships. We're working right now with SLB Health on an apprenticeship program for several of our health programs, in particular nursing. There's actually a big grant program coming out at the state level that's going to support some of that work. And we're really excited about putting some of those apprenticeships in place in nursing.
And Mayor, if I could, I think that the timing of this presentation is great because it allows an introduction of both of you, as you pointed out. But I think it's also good to take a look at those numbers and getting a feel for what TSJC's goals are going to be because the institution does play a big role in our community. for what TSJC's goals are gonna be, because the institution does play a big role in our community. I also, I, I serve on the advisory board representing the Valley, and so I'm sometimes privy to information and discussions. And I think one of the, the goals when you came on, Dr. Epper, was to increase some of those discussions with ASU and, and look at trying to strengthen that partnership. I didn't know if you wanted to share anything in, in relation to that?
Yes, and one of the reasons I was attracted to this job was because of the dual campuses and the presence of Adam State here with Dr. Lovell as the new leader. Dr. Lovell and I actually worked together previously, and she's someone who I greatly admire and respect. And we are both committed to strengthening our partnership. And there are, there are a couple things that we're working on that are problematic. There's a piece of policy at the state level that is, is causing some concern for us as a college because the way the Department of Higher Ed has defined our service area, it limits us to teaching only vocational classes. This is actually in conflict with statute. We are authorized in statute as a comprehensive community college that offers both general education, transfer degrees, and career and technical training, so applied degrees. We are authorized as a comprehensive community college by our accrediting agency, the Higher Learning Commission. There is policy, not statute, policy by the Colorado Department of Higher Education that defines service areas, and I'm not sure why that was set up that way, but I think it goes back to some history. Before TSJC was here, there was an area vocational school here. And that is why that piece of policy is written, that we would offer only vocational courses. But we're not a vocational school, we're a comprehensive community college. We're required to have general education as part of our curriculum for all of our degrees and our certificates. We teach English and math in every one of our programs. So if we weren't able to do that, we wouldn't be able to offer our degrees or exist as a community college. So, we're, I think recognizing that that was problematic, the presidents of both institutions in two thousand and six signed a memorandum of understanding that basically opted both institutions out of that service area policy. And it was kind of put in a drawer, and no one looked at it for many, many years, until recently. Meanwhile, we've continued operating as a comprehensive community college. The state has invested in a science wing of our building. We have science labs that we're teaching for our nursing program and all of our health science programs. So, we're continuing to operate in that capacity the way we operate on our Trinidad campus, and hoping that we can work closely with Adam State, because I really do believe that we serve a different student population. Our students tend to need a little more support, a little more hands-on attention, more of a nurturing environment. We strengthen that, we give them a lot of tutoring and small class sizes, and launch them successfully so that they can be a successful Adam State student and transfer. So that is my hope, is that we will, we will live and work side by side with Adam State, with both of us standing strong, as most community colleges stand together with their four-year institution partners around the state of Colorado and nationally.
And Dr. Epper, I just wanna thank you, just to finish out this topic. I'm, I'm grateful that we have your leadership, because I know those conversations aren't always easy, but thankfully with the professionalism and leadership from both institutions, we can, we can have hope that we'll work our way through this, so thank you.
Thank you, and we have Councilor Carson, would like to ask you another question.
Thank you for touching on that, I ran into that hurdle this year with my daughter. But I wanted to congratulate you guys and thank you guys greatly for bringing the nursing program in, in general, you know, both campuses, I've heard great things about it. And it is, is a huge addition here and a huge need for this community, I think, you know, the whole area, but thank you very much for that, and again, welcome.
Thank you, we really appreciate your support.
Well, I don't see any red lights, so thank you so very much, appreciate the presentation. Okay, Council, up next, we have business brought forward by city staff economic development.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy had offered to be here, but since we have kind of had a long history of discussing this, I, I didn't think that she needed to be here. So, from a historical perspective, this started, I would say, probably about two years ago when through the Chamber of Commerce, ACID, the city, and some other partners of, of saying, we probably need a group that would look at the Main Street four-point approach, maybe not become a certified Main Street program, because that requires you to hire a separate director and figure out how to pay that person and all that, but there's best practices out there. So we met with the chamber and, and talked with the chamber board in regards to, would they wanna have a subcommittee that would take a look at that, and it could look at empty storefronts and putting art up, or the parking, or, you know, all of those types of things? Or did they want the city to take a look at it? And so the, the chamber board actually had a great conversation about it, but then decided that they would prefer for the city to set up an advisory board. And so, that's something we had shared with you guys, but it was kind of on the back burner. But now that Kathy's position is a city employee, and as she's, she's spent a lot of time making those contacts with the, the current businesses and all of that, now she's able to kind of start getting to those items that were the back burner, and this was one of them. And so, the resolution before you now would set up an advisory committee, and the focus of it would just, it would be, they would meet bi-monthly, or every other month. The, they would do the implement, work on the implementation of the downtown design plan that has just recently been adopted. They would also look at the National Main Street Program and the four-point approach, any kind of development issues, encouraging businesses to have employees not park in front of the business, or just those types of activities type of thing. The resolution, as it's written, is a committee that would be seven, or actually nine members. Of those, there's two ex-officio that would be the director of the Chamber of Commerce and the director of the marketing districts, we wanna make sure those efforts are all coordinated and, and flowing together. Of the remaining seven seats, six of them would be from the Central Business District, and so two would represent the hospitality industry, which is restaurant or a hotel. Two would represent the retail industry, and two would represent property owners within the, the Central Business District.
Okay, Council, Council Vehill.
May I ask why we can't have a city councilor on there?
You can, they, they will be meeting during the day. That's something, if you wanna add a, a city council representative, that's, that's fine.
What do y'all think about that, Council?
Well, I think it's up to, I'll let all the council members comment, chime in.
Well, I guess my, my one concern of having a project this big, that nine members may be too small. I mean, two people from the retail, two people from the other industries, I think, is just too small, so. I would like to see it expanded, have, have a few more people from downtown industries participate. And also, I think we ought to have a member from city council participate too.
So, the only comment I would make to that, I don't have any opinion on the city council. I, we just didn't even think of that, so I have no opinion on that. So nine is, is kind of a normal size, there are cities that are bigger, with bigger geographic book area that would have a similar size, and it can be hard to get people to volunteer for these types of things, especially if they're already doing the chamber or other types of things. So, my only caution would be is, you may wanna see if we can get these seats filled, and if we have an overabundance of interest, council can always expand that at that point in time. But to get people to volunteer and show up and regularly participate can sometimes be challenging.
What's gonna be the appointing process? Put in the paper and have people apply, is that?
It's gonna be the same as what we did when we created the Citizens' Street Committee, although you guys played a big role in that, being, play a big role in this, on encouraging people. But also what we did for the, the homeless coalition, so everything we do to advertise, so something in the paper, probably to the radio, social media, and then we're gonna send it to the chamber, and Kathy will send it out to her economic development group, and so we'll get it out every which way we know. And then, the city attorney was pointing out that you can always, at your discretion, add additional members. I just, I caution you that sometimes it can be challenging to get volunteers, but if, and we could have vacant seats, so.
Okay, Council Hensley.
I would support to start off keeping it the size it is, but I would like to add a city council person.
Council Hensley, would you like to make a motion without effect, and I could second you? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Sorry, I have, I'm fine with a city council member, so I wasn't jumping in with my question. So can you talk a little bit about the at-large member? Are they any kind of citizen from the community, any, what was your thoughts there?
It, it just would be someone that we fill through the interview process with you guys, demonstrates an interest and a willingness to contribute to this group and, and for what it was created for. So, there could be someone from anywhere, it could, it could be where, anywhere that, that meets the criteria to, to be able to serve on an advisory board, that has an interest in the downtown and wants to volunteer their time and, and work towards that.
So, to kind of clarify Ruthie's point earlier, I just wanna ask to make sure I'm understanding. So part of what I see, as we're looking at the downtown plan, is also those connectivity pieces of how it connects to other places in our city, not like designing things for that, those other parts of our city, but how do we make sure our traffic is, not traffic, but like our foot traffic is flowing the way that it needs to flow? Is that where you see this, or am I off-base? And so I just wanna like, in my head, make sure I understand.
Probably, so, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm understanding a hundred percent, so I'll answer it, and then you tell me if I'm understanding. So, we are, from a, from a community planning perspective, gonna look at connectivity across the whole city. And for, both from a pedestrian perspective and, and other types of connectivity type of thing. This group would be looking at, within the Central Business District, but then they might be looking at as far as connectivity is, is there stuff that's engaging ASU? And is there stuff connecting with TSJC? Clearly, the downtown plan talks about connecting to Cole Park and, and to the river. And so, there are those types of connectivity issues, but from a broader community perspective, that would continue to be handled by staff and other processes.
That totally answers my question, thank you.
Okay, I think Council Carson was about to make a motion. Are you thinking now? Okay, alright, Council Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to move, and move to approve a resolution creating the Main Street Advisory Committee, adding one representative from city council to the group.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, not, please start voting. Alrighty.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have from our city clerk, selection of the mayor pro tem.
Okay, council policy establishes that the mayor pro tem should be selected at the first meeting in January for a term of two years, however, since council is going to remain the same, and we're not having a January first meeting, because it's the holiday, staff felt that it was appropriate to add this item to this meeting. So a paper ballot method has been used traditionally to select the mayor pro tem. After you guys discuss who is interested in running for the mayor pro tem position, then I can give you the ballots, and you guys can vote.
Okay, alright, Council, we'll open it up for discussion. Council Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to throw my hat, my name in the hat for this position. I appreciate the service of Council Hensley over the last two years. I think she's done a great job, I think it's important that we, for this position, rotate it through every two years, just to get someone new on there. So I would like to throw my hat, my name in the hat.
Okay, Councilor Hensley.
So I'm supportive of the idea of rotating, and so I will not throw my name in the hat.
Okay, we got a lot of hats around here. Council Carson.
I would then make a motion that we proceed with the vote.
Okay, we'll let, oh, Council Brawls? No? Alright, so, Ms. Howie, you wanna pass out the ballots, or?
You know, if, if there are no multiple contestants for one seat, there's, you can just do it by acclamation. Mayor, you could call for acclamation.
Okay, I'm gonna call for acclamation. Council Carson.
Aye.
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 Oh, so we don't get to push our buttons?
No, you don't, you don't need to push your buttons, because you didn't really have a vote.
Okay, just hit the aye, okay, good deal. Okay, congratulations, Council Vehill. And, Council Hensley, wanna thank you for the past two years. You've been a very active mayor pro tem. You were, you recognize, I mean, you, you really represented us at all of the CML events, and I was so proud to, to hear you were in my home state of Texas, in San Antonio, representing Alamosa as well as CML, and the work that you've done over the past couple of years has really been amazing, so thank you for your time, your effort, and your support. Okay, Council Carson.
I just wanna congratulate Liz on everything she does, congratulate her on her new appointment, or her new election to office, and thank you for everything you do for the city, thank you for the two cer, two years of services, mayor pro tem, and thank you for supporting rotation, it's awesome.
And then, Council Vehill.
Thank you, I, I just wanna highlight the, the work that Ms. Hensley has done with CML. It's amazing and helping getting Alamosa on the map, and having Alamosa a voice at the table in Denver. So thank you very much, Liz.
Council Brawls?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, Council Hensley. You know, I'm, I'm impressed, you're highly active, and also the president of the CML, so you've gotta be very busy, so, and thank you for your service. So it's nothing, I, I just, I agree in rotating, and as you know, I'm, I'm an advocate for term limits, so. I give people an opportunity to serve, so I appreciate that.
Council Carson.
I wanna make one more comment. I, I appreciate what, you know, what you're doing at CML, and I wanna congratulate Lead on being, being appointed, you know, selected to do a session, and just so everybody knows, it had nothing to do with her being president. Thank you, Liz, thank you.
Okay, Council Hensley.
Well, I just wanna thank all of you, because you have all been very supportive of me as mayor pro tem. I think we make a great team, and I feel with us working so closely together is that we are looking, we've continued to do great strides, make great strides for our city, and will continue to do so, and so I just wanna thank you all, and your support means a lot to me. And I'd like to congratulate Council Vehill, I know you'll do a great job, and I'm excited to have you be as mayor, our mayor pro tem.
Thank you, alrighty, anymore? And Council Vehill, I too, congratulate you, and look forward to working with you as well. Okay, no other comments, alright, thank you all, let's move on. Up next, we have city manager legal, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. As shared during the first reading at the last meeting, as councils process for the budget for 2020, they discuss providing funds to outside agencies, and when they approve the budget, those items are set. We do a standard contract with those agencies, and, and that's how we've handled it in the past. However, since the Alamosa Veterans Service is another governmental entity, we are not able to do just a simple contract, it actually has to be an intergovernmental agreement, which requires an ordinance. So, it's exactly the same of, as what councils already approved in the budget, which is the one thousand two hundred, it's just to make sure we're compliant with, with those regulations.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, do we open? Okay, thank you. So at this time, do we open it for a public hearing? Okay, at this time, I would like to open up a public hearing for Ordinance Number 28-2019. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please come up to the podium. Okay, since no one has come to the podium, I will now officially close this public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Counselor Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 28-2019.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly. All right, up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports today? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
We had a Housing Authority meeting last week. I think they're doing great things. I had mentioned at the previous meeting that we had some little free libraries up in the, the housing that is there. The team is doing some great things to really try to make sure residents have access to the things they need. I'm really impressed with the board. I think it's going very, very well, really keeping things moving, and really, I think, supporting the staff at the Housing Authority. So it's been really nice to be a consistent member of this group, seeing the growth and the changes. And they're working on improving the facilities all the time. And I think they're making our, our local housing authority look really great. And I think it's something that we should be proud of as a city.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel, for that report. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to let you all know that the H-PAC and Don Thompson submitted the, with the help of Harry and his crew, the annual report to the state for our H-PAC, and it was accepted. And they're going to ask, they're asking IT to add it to the H-PAC site on the, the website. So if you guys want to look at that, it talks about all that the H-PAC did over the year, the different buildings and that they added on to the registry. And it's pretty bare bones, just what we did with, at meetings and that type of stuff, so.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Daniel?
Sorry. The most important thing that happened at the Housing Authority meeting was they had a clean audit. And I, so I apologize for not adding that to my first part. Their audit was fantastic.
That's great news. Great news. Okay, thank you. Okay, doesn't look like we have any more committee reports, so now we will move to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have a few. The first is we received word this week that the MOM Bridge is on its way. It is being shipped. So we're excited to get that in and, and get it installed and to open up this asset to the community. So that was exciting news. Coming up this Friday at 5:30, beginning at City Hall, is the Celebration of Lights. And so a reminder of that. And on December 11th, which is next week, we do have a work session focused on the golf course operations. And so just a, a reminder of those two, those two events.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have council comments. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to acknowledge Andy Rice and the Ice Rink. I took my family over there last week for Thanksgiving, and it was just phenomenal. My daughters and my wife had major fun, and it was just cool to be there. So thank you. And your staff was top-notch. The ice was perfect. It was cold that night, but that's, that's what happens. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Carson?
I know I've said this a lot, and not to beat a dead horse, but this, this council is extremely community-oriented. Your actions a while ago just show that, that we are always focused on the, the greater good of this community. And so I just wanted to reiterate that, everybody. This is a great team, and thank you guys for letting me be part of it and for all the stuff we do.
Thank you for being a part of that team, buddy. Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had two questions. The first is, so is our practice after we, do we turn on the street holiday lights after the Celebration of Lights? Is that what the, the plan is? And I'm sorry that I don't know this. I feel like I should.
That's okay. We used to have it earlier, but we were receiving significant community input that they would like for it to be afterwards. However, I know there's been some email exchanges going on between Andy and, and Ruthie, and then Andy also talking to our staff. And so I think one of the ideas they've brought up is to still maybe do the city hall lighting and the event itself after Thanksgiving, which is the biggest part of what we were hearing from the merchants and the, in the community. But we could still go ahead and turn on the lights that are on, like, Main Street and the roads and the streets and all of that kind of stuff. And so we don't have to wait to turn them all on at one time. So in the future, if that's something council's open to, we, we can definitely do that. From a staff perspective, I, I strongly feel that we shouldn't do the lighting ceremony the day after Thanksgiving. I'm not going to run numbers unless directed by, by council, but it's a day off. It, it's a holiday for, for staff. And so it's not just about setting a timer. It, it's, it's a bigger deal than that.
I agree with not doing it the day after Thanksgiving, but I also agree that I would like to see them on Main Street. I've been traveling through a lot of different communities, and I think that could look really nice. And then we have our official, like, lighting ceremony for this building and the, like, the, the big stuff that we do later.
And then try to, and then in the future too, since we no longer have the, the courthouse, we will have more time to do better coordination with the businesses to make it even more of a celebration than the just city hall and then walking to see Santa. So, but if, if, unless there's any heartburn from council, I thought Andy's and his group coming up with that idea of, you know, really, it doesn't have to be all at the same time. We could turn on the, the lights that are on the other streets at, at, at an earlier time.
I, I would be supportive of that. We can have a conversation as council. And then obviously, I had a sweater party earlier today, so I, I wanted to own that. But B, thought that it could be fun if council agrees to wear festive sweaters next time. And we could do a picture like we did for the Adam State stuff and, and have just a little bit of fun during the holiday season, if that would be acceptable to everyone.
Good idea. Good idea. I like that idea. Counselor Hensley?
So I do want to share, I mentioned, obviously, I went to San Antonio for the League of Cities Conference, and it was quite an experience. I learned a ton, which I will share with people at a later date. It was great to network with so many different leaders from so many different cities and towns and states. It's interesting, there's many, many small communities that do belong to the League of Cities, but it was just a fantastic experience. And for me, it was my first time to San Antonio, so I really did enjoy San Antonio as well. So I just thought I'd share that. And obviously, as we move forward, I will discuss some of the things I learned, which I think I can bring to the table from a networking standpoint. And then also, just congratulate those students that are graduating in the next two weeks. We will have at Adam State have finals next week. It was one of those short Thanksgiving break, and then all of a sudden, we have one week of class, and then we're graduating. But just to wish everybody also at all levels a great Christmas break during this next couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, and, and I just have a few comments. David, did you have anything you want to say? Your likes, or not? You want to? Okay, good. All right. So Chief Chapman, I know your team has been extremely busy out there in the fire department. And I just want you to know that we appreciate everything that you all are doing. I've heard a lot of sirens lately, and every time I hear them since it's winter time, I just assume that a lot of them are because of fires and things that are going on. So thank you and your team for putting in that extra time to help out when those families are in need. Also, since we're like in this team camaraderie thing going on right now, I would like to invite all of the city staff as well as city council to actually come to the lighting ceremony this, this Friday to show that united team effort. And the last thing I really would like to invite all of the city council members to is the ICE Fest. We are going to do the Polar Plunge. I would like to invite you all to really show up in a team effort to participate in the Polar Plunge as well. Other than that, I think that's all I have. No, we're not, we're not going to challenge.
Because I'm not sure you can bring it if you do a challenge. There's only seven of you.
See, Michael was a true trooper. He, he had surgeons showed up. We, we'll hold off until January to make that challenge, but we'll see about that. Okay.
Can I just add one little thing? Sorry. I'm thinking for our festive sweater day, I think everybody should wear a festive sweater. So I'm looking around the audience, or to the rest of staff, and I think we challenge staff to also wear a festive sweater.
Oh, I like it. I like it. Okay, if we don't have any further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.